Welcome, everybody, to our special council meeting. Today is March twenty ninth and the time is five, six P M. Could we get a pledge of allegiance, please? Stand up.
Ready, begin.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could we please remain silent for a moment of silence for persons and military members? Thank you.
Monica, could we get roll call, please?
Roll call, council member Soto. Council member Moran. Council member King. Mayor Portem Garcia. Mayor Aguilar.
Present.
For the record, Mayor Portem Garcia is not in attendance, but his absence is excused.
Is there any changes to the agenda? I don't see any changes. We're gonna go move on to our citizen comments. At a special meeting, members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter on the agenda may do so at this time. Now, under the provisions of California code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comment? I don't see any public comments. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to our educational workshop, which is the status on current and future water projects. Vanessa?
Yes, good evening, mayor, city council members, staff, present, and the public. Vanessa Portillo, city manager, I wanted to bring this workshop to you. It's an educational workshop in regards to our water projects. We have our city engineer, Mario Govea, here that will lead this presentation. He will go through a couple of, he has an agenda. He'll go over that agenda right now. But as you have any questions or as if any other members of the public or anyone attending or via the streaming service has any questions, we will take those at the end so he can move forward.
Or as we go through.
Or as we go through.
Go along, that's fine.
If you have any questions, please let, let us know and then he'll, he'll take them. So he, right now, he will take us through this presentation.
Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you, mayor, council. So as you can see, this is an update to the council on the city's water system. And on the agenda, we have a water supply update. So that's basically in terms of production, consumption, available capacity, some trends, that sort of thing. Number two, Erwim project. These are small projects that use surface water in cooperation with M I D. And they will, the purpose of these to irrigate parks using surface water. And item three, it's the T C P progress. There have been some projects that were completed. There's a number of them still in different, at different stages. Number four, new wells. There's a few new wells and they, again, are at different stages of design. There have been some water line replacements and there's some still needed. And I'll go through that also. And then I'll close with a project summary. There's a lot of information here that I tried to consolidate in a, you know, thirty, forty minute presentation. So I'll try to do that, be as clear as I can be. And just go ahead and ask questions as, as we go along.
Is there a water consultant online?
I am the water consultant.
Jared, you ever stick your listening? He's not online or?
Oh, from, from the, you talk of, from the state?
No, he does the water, his watering.
Oh, okay.
And this is water projects. This is not operations or testing or anything that we have to do today. This is just future.
So Jared, it does your compliance, yeah, regulatory compliance, that's a different thing. Okay, moving on to water supply update, the overview. Capacity, the system capacity, we normally calculate these things based on ten year data. That's criteria stipulated by the state. The California water code does that. And in, in terms of your water supply, all, all the wells are operational at this time. You will see that the firm production capacity is eighty-nine hundred. Firm means that it's your total wells put together. Mine is the one with the biggest capacity, which is well seventeen. It's two thousand gallons per minute. So you actually produce ten thousand nine hundred gallons per minute. But for the, for calculating these, the capacity, you actually use what's called firm capacity. And yours at this point is eighty-nine hundred gallons. At that, you, you do have adequate capacity to, to meet the current maximum daily demand. And that occurred actually in twenty fourteen. It has decreased, so your, your trend shows that you're actually using less water than that now. As I said, the, the, these calc used a ten year period and it's always the worst case scenario.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It's been a decrease. What do you correlate that decrease to?
It can be, yeah, several things. I'll, I actually have that bar graph here. If you look at twenty seventeen, that's the drought. It's a really bad drought here. So there were mandatory restrictions. So you, you'll see that that was the lowest one here in the last five years. As, as things got, got a little more relaxed, it gradually went up. And twenty twenty was the highest one in the recent past in the last ten years. And that could be attributed to COVID.
People were saying homeworks.
That's what everybody thinks. I mean, it's, it's a gas, but I think it's a good, good gas. And if you see last, last year in twenty twenty-one, it started going down already.
Due to concerns of probably another drought and concerns with conservation of water, do you think that trend is gonna be the same as of twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I have here towards, towards the bottom, a note that says water demand. Water demand increased thirty-six percent from seventeen to twenty. And then it decreased fifteen percent from twenty to twenty-one. And we are in a current drought. It has been made official by the state. But as of, as of today, there are no mandatory restrictions coming from the state. They are to be handled locally, the local.
Jurisdictions.
Yeah, jurisdictions. The water, whoever owns the water system comes up with those and that would be the city. So there's no, no conserv, no conservation measures yet. They just, the state just came up with the official drought, I think about two weeks ago. State was waiting for, for March to see if we had a really wet March. Obviously didn't happen. We got a little bit of, a little bit of rain yesterday and that's pretty much it. So that's where we're at. So going back to the adequate capacity to meet current maximum daily demand. So you're okay with that. However, capacity for future demand based on proposed projects. And that's basically taken into account the four, four hundred and eighty apartment that was approved here and then the eighty units for visionary. If you count those, then you do not have adequate to meet. Peak hours, peak hours is just the spikes. And, and again, this is conservative when you calculate that, but that's what the numbers show. Now, in order for you to not meet the peak hour, they would have to be built and occupied. Obviously, they're not. It'll be several years until you get five hundred and sixty units built and occupied. So by, by that time, as we go along with all these projects that I'll be talking about, then you're gonna start moving towards meeting and exceeding what you need. And as of now, you're still meeting everything except if these five hundred and sixty units were built, then you would meet the peak hour. So the Erwim projects that I briefly mentioned, they are in the works. They're being designed and it's for using surface water from M I D canals to water the Gallo Park, which is, I'm sure, oh, yeah, you can do that, I'll do it. I can do that either. But you know where the Gallo Park is. No wonder it's not working. I have the wrong, wrong thing here. Yeah. It still doesn't work. Anyway, you know where the Gallo Park is and then the Arcalian. And those, it's only like fifteen acres. So it will reduce pumping by about seventy-five acre feet a year, which is not too much, but every little bit helps. And it will save the city about nine thousand dollars a year in pumping expenses. And those, it was a grant through Erwim. It's been in the works for probably five years. It kind of slow.
Can I ask, what's the, what has been the delay or in regards to moving forward?
It's, it's just, by the time that the grant is in place, it was in twenty twenty-one.
And then you're breaking ground?
It's construction expected for the fourth quarter this year. It's being designed as we speak. We do, yeah.
So real quick, I noticed that in the map, and this is probably a question also later, there's only two parks being selected for this. What are the specifics and what are the reasons of why not like Max Foster, which is a much larger park?
Was proximity and what M I D was able to, to do, to work out with the city.
Do you project, I know it was based on proximity and partnership with M I D, but the future, you anticipate any future partnerships and moving towards that kind of a, a plan or kind of a design or framework?
There's actually much larger things that you're gonna have to engage in and it's gonna be surface water. You're gonna invariably, you're gonna end up with a hybrid system. So you'll still have some wells as you phase, phase out of the wells. You're gonna end up taking water from Merced River. There is a project that actually went into the state already, but it's for, it's out a few years. I didn't show it here. And it's for then take off of the river for the future treatment plant. That, that will start converting your system into a hybrid system. And eventually it might be mostly surface water. It all depends on how the recharge goes on with all this overdrafting of the aquifers, that sort of thing.
Especially during drought time.
Yes, but, yeah, it's, yeah, that's not gonna help this year.
Just real quick, so this has been fully, this has been fully funded already? The city match portion of it's already been?
Yes, yeah.
So Mario, are these correct? Let's say a direct pump or pump system from the M I D level to these specific parts?
Correct, yeah. It's real simple.
So we're going, so we're going C F S?
Yeah, whatever you, yeah. It's an estimated thing is whatever is available, but the system estimated, there's a certain amount. All those, as you know, with these water districts, all depends on allocations. And I'm sure you're hearing a lot about allocations this year. And C C I D only gets this and M I D only gets that and T I D only gets that. If you have a good, a good rain here, then a lot of the district, the districts with good water rights get a hundred percent allocation and then it kind of goes on from there. But this year, even the, the one with the best water rights around here would be C C I D. They're not even getting anywhere near that.
So the water's only available, the water's in the canals themselves, basically.
Yep. T C, one, two, three, T C P. The first project has been, project number one has been completed. That's the one that takes care of wells fourteen and sixteen. So I'll try to show, I think most of, this is fourteen over here on the east side of the city. And then there's a raw water line that went all the way to sixteen over here. And there's a treatment plant there now that takes care of T C P. There was a treatment plant there already, but it didn't treat T C P. So we expanded it to also take care of that. So those two wells now are producing T C P free water.
Are those, who will connect with each other?
Yes. So you get the, say fourteen over here. So it pumps water out of the ground. There's a pipe that's a raw water pipe that connects, goes all the way here to well sixteen. And it's raw water. So it goes into the site, gets treated, and then gets put back into the system after it's treated. So, so in some instances, these raw water lines will be parallel to, to distribution lines. So there will be a raw and a, and a treated one that's close to each other.
And you touched on something, so I just wanna clarify for anybody watching or seeing this later. So it's T C P free water. So it's completely filtered.
Yeah, non-detected, yeah. T C, T C P was regular. When the, the city actually was really good and proactive early on when you got your settlement and all of that. At that time, T C P was not regulated. It was known to not be good, but it was not regulated. And when the M C, the maximum contaminant level came about, was at five parts per trillion, which means that if you detected, you had to comply. That's all.
So it's undetectable?
Undetectable, yeah. So that project was a four million dollar low interest loan from S R, revolving fund, S R F. And it's, it started in twenty eighteen and then execution of the contract was nineteen. It was, went through construction, as I think most of you know, and it was completed late last year.
Yes. So you mentioned that, and just, this is just for clarification. So well sixteen and well, and well fourteen, as they are connected, they are T C P free.
Correct.
Are, are they the only ones so far?
That are T C P free, yes.
No, we haven't.
Go ahead. Oh, we have well eight, I'm sorry. They're not the only ones.
Well eight was the first one built, which is right across from your model school and in front of Foster Farms.
That one is also has a T C P plant that was finished in twenty thirteen.
So, but those are the only three?
Correct, as of now.
As of now?
As of now. And we're working on getting all of the wells treated for T C P. Yes.
Since those two wells are T C P free, which area does those wells?
Yeah, they're, they're all interconnected. So there, there's a network of pipes everywhere. So if you'd say, where's the best waters? It's probably near well sixteen, because that's where it's coming out. But then it all gets blended together. And outside of well eight, it'll also be, you know.
Does it have a monthly cost on that?
Oh, there's, there's a lot of operation and maintenance of all of these treatment plants. And you have arsenic also that's being treated. But this T C P treatment, yeah, these are expensive. I'm sure you see the big tanks and vessels and all, and there's media in there that, and the operators have to have a higher license and all of that. So, yeah, it's, it's not a cheap proposition. Probably per plant runs probably a couple hundred grand every two years or so.
And that's just that, that's just for the media, from the carbon?
Yeah.
From what we've been through mainly so far is just well eight media. But because well sixteen and fourteen are just barely put online, it's been in production for six months. So when we start tracking the, the carbon and see how it starts declining, then we start getting ready to, to, to do a change out. And that's usually where the money comes in as far as the change out of the carbon.
When it starts, they call it breaking through, break, it starts being detected, then you have to start thinking about doing, yeah. Okay. Sure.
How many wells do we have total in town?
Total, you have probably about eight or nine. You have.
So we got about pretty much thirty percent of the water that's.
Something like that, yeah, at this point.
Out of about eight, we have three that are.
Something like that, yeah, about a third, yeah. I, I, yeah, I'll tell you that you have eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. So that's three, six, nine, nine wells, yeah. But it's gonna change. This is what you have now, but it's, we'll go through, it'll change. Okay. So project number two is a centralized treatment plant at Arcalian Park. So our, here I go with this, how does this thing goes? So Arcalian Park's right there. So this treatment plant is going to take care of three wells. You have well twelve over here, well seventeen over here, and well thirteen over here. There's an old abandoned well that's well ten already at Arcalian Park, but that's not being used. It's just there, yeah. So this is going to be a site that you'll have the treatment, treatment plant and storage. You'll have a storage tank there. It'll be semi-buried, concrete is like a shoebox looking thing, and it'll be semi-buried. And it's done for architecture, so it doesn't, it looks a little nicer, yeah. You already, you already have a, a tank on the east side of town that looks like a hockey puck, yeah. So what, project two at Arcalian will take care of those three wells. And project three, it is at the well eight site. It's over here. That's the well eight site. Well eight is already treated for T C P. That plant's going to be expanded to take wells nine, which is here. It's off of Campbell, right there. And then there's going to be two new ones. One is eighteen, which is right, it's right behind the car wash. And then nineteen, which it's, it's another new well. It's going to replace well eleven that's here. This well eleven is actually basically dedicated to foster farms, because there's a pipe that goes right into their plant here. It is tight to eight, but it's, they basically got everything out of there. It's a lot of sand, right, Tony? I guess, so I know we, we put a sand separator there a long time. Big, at a, like a separator. And then we actually got some filters, which is in addition to that, you install filters and it takes, I think, I think they're, those are like forty microns or they're foster, the brand is foster, just filters. And they, they take stuff down to about talcum powder size. So they basically take everything out. But again, it costs money, you have to clean them. Ever, you can fix stuff, it all costs money.
Just to go back on project number two, the centralized treatment, that's gonna be a T C P treatment. The whole works, the works?
Correct, yeah, of those three wells there, twelve, thirteen, and seventeen.
You'll put us at six after that project.
Correct. I, I have the dates here as we go along, right at the bottom here. They kind of all, it's, it's twenty twenty-four, that's what we're looking at. And then project eight, three is eighteen, nine, and nineteen. Project number four was the one that was recently added with the well nineteen. Here it's a centralized treatment. We considered actually doing a, well, it's called well head treatment. It's treated right at the well. So would be here at well, the new well nineteen. But rather than doing that, we, we're looking at actually doing a raw water pipe going here along Campbell and then tying at the back of eighteen. That way you only have the well eight treatment plant instead of having another one. So the fewer plants you have, the better off you are, because costs will be lower because of economy of scale. So that's that project number four. The S R F application initially for these projects was submitted in eighteen and then revised, as we went along, revised scopes were submitted in twenty-one and added twelve, which was not considered early on, this, this one over here, and then eighteen and nineteen, which are new wells. The loan funding for these is S R F also. The good news is that before they were supposed to be a low interest loan. Now, because of your income survey came in lower than the previous one, you'll actually be able to get seventy-five percent, grant twenty-five percent loan. So that, that's.
That's good.
Because these are big money, yeah.
And so on this project, what is the, the expected cost?
Yeah, I have, I have, yeah, I have it here. I'll, I'll get to it. But, yeah, they're big butts. So the next, this is an early layout of the, the Arcalian one. So you'll, you'll see the, yeah, the stuff, oh, here I go. The Arcalian one, it doesn't show on that. Yeah, it shows a little bit. But these are the vessels, so that's what actually gets, and this is the, the one tank that I mentioned was semi-buried, that's a million gallon tank here.
How big is the tank outside of town?
The one that you already have, it's a million gallon. Yeah, same size as that. Different, of course, it's round, but it's same, same capacity. So this one is at the well eight site. You will also have a tank that's a million and a half gallon tank at the well eight. So you'll have the expanded, the expanded facilities here. You already have four vessels there, so these would be all new. And then you'll have a tank, you have a booster pump station, and you'll be able to handle three more wells there. So, but by the time this site is done, we'll be treating four wells. So moving on to new wells, I know I've mentioned well eighteen, that's one behind the, the car wash. And that's a replacement for well nine. Well nine will not be abandoned, but it is a pretty old, it's your oldest well, really. So it, it will be used as a standby well. And it's actually, we didn't even. And it's actually, we didn't even account for that in the future calculations for capacity, because it's an old well. We took that one off and eleven off, actually fifteen. So well eighteen, that will be a, a raw water line going to the well eight treatment plant. And then well nineteen is a replacement for well eleven. The test well, normally when you do wells, you do a test well first, make sure the site, it's a good site to have a, a production well. That was, the, the test well for ele, for nineteen was done in February, something like that. Couple of months, a month ago, couple of months ago. So that will be also treated at well eight. We're looking at that now, instead of having the well head treatment. And then well eight A is a replacement for well eight. Well eight is pretty old. It is, we will be, let me go back to the, see if I can, basically. So there's going to be a new, a new well eight, kind of in between the tank and the, the vessels, kind of in here somewhere. And the test well was done there. So that's in design, that one is, well into design. Then the test well for that was completed about a year ago.
How do you guys determine, like, what kind of testing? Out of curiosity, it's a good site.
What we, what, we, we look for several things, but in a nutshell is quantity and quality. So when, when you do a test well, you, the driller takes out strata, you know, samples of the dirt, whatever's coming out of there. You want to look for well-grated materials, which ideally would be sands and gravels and things like that. Clay is no good, it just seals everything. So you want, you want well-grated material. Here you do have some decent wells. Sometimes they, you know, some are better than others, obviously. But, yeah, you, you, okay. Well nineteen, I think is gonna be, we, I just, we just received the, the, the test well water quality data recently. So we're gonna be going through, through that. I think that's gonna be a, a good well with a lot of potential for high production. When we do these calc, do this capacity stuff, we try to be conservative and say, oh, maybe you're gonna get twelve hundred gallons. You normally get more than that. But we don't want to gas high and then be disappointed.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So, moving on to, I think, moving on to the water line replacements. Of course, you did have a lot of leaky pipes in the past, and you're getting a lot better. You still have some, but we did do a, a couple of phases. The most recent one was phase three. It was all grant, was CDBG grant, and it's in that area. Oh, thank you. It's in the area east of City Hall. It's that way. There is a phase four that the city actually started moving forward with, I don't know, two, three years ago. But then it was gonna be city funded, and they kind of put a hold on it. So it's still on hold, and these are between a million and two million normal.
So. Doctor, the reason for, just to clarify.
Yes.
Their on hold is, it was gonna be city funded? So are we seeking any type of funding right now?
The, the CDBG grants are great, but they, they, they hinge on income. So you have to have an income survey, and so they focus on a certain area that qualifies for that. It's presently, it's probably best grant, probably a little faster, a lot faster than SRF. And, and it's, it's a hundred percent grant. But then your constraint is your income survey area, so it's, it's a certain area. I know this phase four didn't qualify for that, so had to be a city fund or other funds. So this is, this is the summary, kind of putting everything together here with the costs and use funding and completions and that sort of thing. I know they're color coded, but you can't hardly make it out on, on the map. So TCP one, that's the wells fourteen and sixteen that was completed. It was four million dollars, was a loan, a low interest loan, I think, is like one and a half percent or something like that. And then TCP two, the Arkalian one, was originally, originally eight and a half million. And then, and it, it was a loan, eight and a half million alone. It was expanded to actually take well twelve. And now with the costs are going through the roof, it's at about twelve six. The good news is that eight and a half was a loan, now the twelve six is seventy-five percent grant. So the city's, yeah, instead of having a eight and a half million dollar loan, we'll have a three million dollar loan.
Just to summarize, so this, this project is in the design phase or?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very heavy in design phase, yeah.
And then the reason for the expanded cost is it's due to?
We added well twelve, and then the, the cost of stuff is going through the roof.
Material costs?
Construction costs are just crazy. TCP three, same idea at, at the well eight site. So it, it will have the new well eight, we call it eight A, nine, which was added to it recently, and eighteen and nineteen. So we'll treat those four wells. Originally was three and a half million to test was just eight and nine. That's what that three and a half million was for. And then eighteen and nineteen were added to it, so it really, really kicked that cost up. So originally you had the SRF loan for three and a half million. Now the ten million is seven and a half grant, and then the loan is two and a half million. So even with that huge increase, the loan went down some, a million dollar. And that's also twenty twenty-four. We would like to bid those, if not, if not together right next to each other.
That was also in the same place?
Yeah, these, these are being, the state, you know, there are several packages that go in with these applications. There's three big packets, and they take forever to, used to, used to take a year, it's taken about two years to review. Yeah, so you get a lot of free money, but it takes a long time. Then well eight A, that's a replacement for well eight. Wells cost roughly a million plus now, and that's a million two, that's a new well there. So that well will be built, connected to the facilities, the old well eight will be abandoned. They would be too close to each other to actually operate both of them. They'd be fighting each other for water.
When are you breaking ground on that one?
That one is probably gonna be out this summer.
And so when you mean replacement, the, the reason why we're replacing eight is because?
It's old, it's primarily because it's, when they get old, the casings deteriorate. You start pumping a lot of funny thing, sand, and then they cavat, they, they suck water in, then they cavitate, they mess up the pump impellers. It's just an age-related thing.
Okay, so then that's why you're still doing it close by, and then certainly because you don't know water, but because the actual well is just old and it's just.
It's an old well, yeah. The, the, the city actually spent about a hundred and some thousand on that well, like, what, three years, four years ago? Something like, and I think we swagged that, didn't we? Which is patching the ca, the casing, it looks like Swiss cheese after a while. So you have to patch it and do, do stuff. So I think that one was swagged, and, and then they, they can redevelop the wells to, to shift the, the gravel pack, so that it actually produces more, more water and less sand. Yeah, that's what. And wells, they normally have a forty-year, fifty-year, if you're lucky, life, yeah.
And that is the oldest well we have in town that is still producing water. So when we had it redone, it, it kind of brought down our, our GAC treatment, which is the treatment that's there now. So by him saying that we're putting a well right next to it, not right, you know, right next to it, but right next to it, because it will still be using the same treatment system, the GAC system, and go through the filters. So that way, when they bring in the new plant, it'll all tie it all together.
What role is?
Well number eight, across from your model school.
Yeah, so that one is city funded, and it'll be late this year, early next year. And then eighteen is the one behind the, the, the car wash. And it will have a fairly short raw water line going to the well eight side to the treatment.
And, and is that owned by my name?
That's the one, yeah, that's owned by Foster Farms. The city is negotiating with Foster Farms to acquire, you know, for it to become a city, city well. And that's something that management takes care of. And then well nineteen is, is the one out along the railroad track that's replacing eleven. So well nineteen is that one there. And that's, that's one that Foster Farms is working with the city, and they have indicated that they would, they would pay for that well, yeah. In the, in the past, some of these, they were going to do, not do this, but it. Normally if it's a private, like a developer, like a developer, they do things really fast. The private, they do things really fast. Foster Farms is private, but it's kind of a big animal. They can do things that fast either. Yeah, so, yeah. But anyway, so that's, that's what I have, and I'll be glad to take any more questions if you have. Yeah, I timed that for forty minutes, so I missed it by four minutes.
Unacceptable. So at the end of these listed projects, so we'll be having a total of how many, how many sites that are TCP?
You're going, you're going to have the, the one at sixteen that's already operating, treating TCP. You're gonna have the one at eight that's gonna be expanded. And then you're gonna have the Arkalian one, so you're gonna have three centralized plants.
Which one are not going to be treated?
Of the existing wells, the ones down here, that's thirteen, seventeen, twelve. Those are not treated yet. And then up here, eleven is not treated.
Is eleven going to apply to Foster Farms?
What's, what's that?
The well eleven?
Yes.
Does that only apply to Foster Farms?
This one goes straight to Foster Farms here.
Do they have different requirements in regards to TCP? Same requires?
Yeah, same, same requirement.
And then the other, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was just gonna say, yeah, I mean, right now, the, the, the city, because it's a blended now, it's a lot better. And I think sometimes you're, because the city has to monitor this monthly, all these tasks and all, and sometimes it doesn't show, sometimes it shows a little bit, yeah.
But all these, these TCP plants are, that are employed, are sitting in place, you don't have to get different licenses? Or they could require?
It's a higher license, yeah.
That's something.
But they already have it, because you already have those plants. So it's not like you don't have people that can take care of. You already have it.
How about you have that?
It, it's just, the one at eight will be bigger, the same thing, it's just bigger. And then the only new one you're gonna, you're gonna have is Arkalian. Arkalian, there's nothing there, yeah. So you're gonna, you probably will need more staff, because you're gonna have more stuff to take care of. But the requirement is the same as you have now.
And the good thing about that well nineteen, which is replacing well, well nineteen that is replacing well eleven, once it gets replumbed and headed to well eight, before that well would only service Foster Farms. But once this treatment goes to well eight, then it'll go everywhere. It won't just go straight to them.
Okay. Yeah, because it was virtually dedicated to them, I mean, right there, they just take all the water. They take a lot of eight, too, don't they? Because it's close to them on the other side.
As well, yeah. So, I mean, obviously, as council and myself as a mayor, we're obviously always advocating and concerned about the quality of the water. So this, at least, at least gives us a better roadmap of future projects that are gonna address some, you know, TCP requirements and the quality of the water. But also another concern we've had is, you know, make sure we have the capacity to fulfill our upcoming projects and, and the current, you know, the current population size.
Yeah, current, you're fine. Like I said, once, if you were to get the five hundred and sixty unit, units that are approved, constructed, and you didn't do anything with the water, then you'd have that one parameter that you wouldn't meet the peak hour.
So we would have, we'd be in trouble, right?
Yeah, you, you'd get a notification from the state saying, oh, you're not meeting that, you need to meet it.
Okay. But with these projects on board, moving forward, we're gonna be fine.
With these projects, once these projects are in the ground and operating, you're going to meet your peak hour and exceed it by a lot, because peak hour, it's, it's very dependent on storage, because it spikes, spikes in use. So if you, if you have three and a half million gallons stored, then you need to use a bunch of water. You turn all those booster pumps on, you're gonna have water like the, the requirement for peak hours, four hours, and you'll have way more than that.
Okay.
Because you not only have the wells, the, the tanks being drained, you have the wells pumping water in there. So the, the deficit between what you need and what you pumping in there is very little. You're not even gonna get close to being deficient. These have to be replaced, yeah. And you, you will have, you will have capacity for quite a number of EDU homes, you know, houses. But you have, and this is, obviously, it's gonna be a city philosophy, city, whatever the city wants to do, because you have the, the big user, Foster Farms, Foster Farms takes two-thirds of your water. Sixty-five percent of your production is used by Foster Farms. So if that trend goes to continue, as you have more capacity, if they use two-thirds of that, then that drastically reduces the number of available EDUs you're gonna have. So as you get closer to being in that situation, you're gonna have to.
Yeah.
As a city, make a decision, well, we're gonna continue this sixty-five percent thing with Foster Farms, or maybe, say, well, maybe we really want more, whatever, commercial, residential.
That'll be, that'll be an important discussion and.
Yeah, oh, for sure. And you, you, you know, but you have to start planning, because then planning gets bombarded with, you know, we want this and we want that, do you have water, don't you have water?
Absolutely, and I think what we need to be focusing in, and I think our culture needs to change as a city, is to plan better, you know, and anticipate better and plan better for, for the future.
Oh, for sure.
Especially anticipating any future development, expansion, whatever the case may be. We wanna make sure we're in a good position.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
You're right, we need to start thinking and wrapping our head around all that stuff now.
The, the city of Livingston actually is one of the few ahead of the ballgame in, in terms of TCP. Not production, but in terms of quality. They're way better than most. Up and down the valley here, there's a lot of them that are, and we, we actually deal with some of them. We do treatment plants and a bunch of other, but they're lagging Livingston by two or three years.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, and, and the state has set up the, the, the MCL for TCP and, a couple of years ago. And, and gave the agencies, oh, you have until twenty twenty to meet, they know nobody can meet it.
Can meet it, yeah.
And then they, as long as you're making an effort towards reaching that goal, they're fine. But if you did nothing, they wouldn't be fine.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's almost an unrealistic deadline for some jurisdictions, but
Yeah, there's a line, there's some little systems around here that are, they have TCP, but they're so little, they can't really have their own plants. So they're looking for, you know,
Partnerships with other, yeah.
Consolidation. So you you'll be coming across some of those. And the state loves those. But they have to throw money at it.
Alright, so no, absolutely. I think with, like I mentioned earlier, it's important that we wrap our hand, head around those upcoming challenges and anticipate and plan accordingly as a, you know, as a city and as a team. So as a council, you know, that's our our concerns and we wanna make sure we support the mission in regards to quality and and capacity, so.
Yeah, your 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 big thing here is you have this huge user Foster Farms, but, I mean, everything has to click right for, because they use so much water. So if you have issues with production and it affects them
Yeah, absolutely.
more than anybody else. You'll still have water at home, but they may not have as much water as they need.
It's important to, you know, continue that relationship and partner with them and have those discussions, so.
And they've been really good in the last few years.
Yeah, they have.
Working with the city, I think. And I know they work, they've worked with you for a gazillion years.
Mayor, council, one of the comments that I wanted to bring forward in terms of the planning for and and looking ahead for the city is looking at this project summary, sorry, Mario. Looking at the project summary, if we see, project number one has been completed. However, project number two and three, which relates to the TCP for the Arkalian and the expanded, the expansion of well eight, those are the two most expensive projects that we have. And those two projects alone are dependent on grant money. And as we have experienced with the grant process, as far as the application and 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 getting approval and funding and so forth, this anticipated completion date, it's it's a tentative date. It's 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 ideal. It's not set in stone that by twenty twenty-four, we will be cash on hand moving forward. It's still, I really want to plant the seed that it is grant money and it's dependent on the approval. And for, you know, like, yes, we have the opportunity to have the seventy-five, twenty-five funding, but at the same time, it requires a lot of patience. Because we we just went through this, the the recreation center project is something that the city had applied for three years ago. It, we're just seeing the 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 funding or we're just seeing the the ripping of the of of the fruit right now. So we, I know Mario and his team and everyone, it's very responsive. Whenever we 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 have to submit information to the grant agency, but at the same time, it it takes a, it takes a while. And this two, two projects alone are the two projects that are the most expensive and the ones that will be providing those centralized treatment for TCP for many of the wells in the city. On the same token, so we're we're looking at this project summary and we're looking at the latest of twenty twenty-four. Really, that is something to look with 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 some caution because it could be later than twenty twenty-four, just depending on on that grant money coming through and and the city getting getting approved. But at the same time, as as Mario also brought forward in at the beginning of our of our meeting, it 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 also ties to what we can provide as far as capacity, as far as like the ma- the the maximum daily demands and meeting that peak hour demand for the current residents that we have on board. And perhaps that doesn't take into account any kind of changes as far as like the industry. We know, and Mario also talks about Foster Farms being one of the heaviest users of our water. If if they at some point with between now and twenty twenty-four decide to do some sort of expansion, that's also going to have an impact on this. Because we're not accounting any type of expansion for the the heavy users of the water or any kind of like new line of new industry line that will potentially use a lot of our water. So those are just some of the points. And also some of the points that when 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 those questions comes come through our planning department with those interest from potential developers, potential industries, these are the the items that we just have to plan and be very careful for because of the the way where where everything, it's 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 depending on, it's depending on so many factors.
Lot of moving parts. And there's a saying, the more, the more free money, the longer it takes.
That's true.
And that's pretty true.
So Mario, I wanna hear you talk about the future.
So let me repeat. Mario, I wanna hear about the future. We have groundwater sustainability issues. And we have obviously a a demand for new development that somehow needs to be met. So what 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 strategies should the city be, city be using to accomplish those goals and objectives?
Well, you you're talking about sustainability and that's, I'm assuming you're addressing CIGMA? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So CIGMA is is a sustainability act that came about here a few years back. And you believe, you do have your own GSA, I believe. So it basically, whatever you take out, you have to put back in. It's it's a water balance type of thing. You you are, you have a few, quite a few years to comply with and all of that, but what this is doing is actually driving what I talked about earlier on switching from groundwater to surface water. Because, you know, you start, you keep pumping water and pumping water and you you have issues like Mendota with subsiding ground of six feet and things like that. So and so in terms of that, your GSA will address that and you 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 are working with MID on that. So that's gonna be a basin-wide type of strategy. All of these GSAs and all of these big water districts that are leading this CIGMA effort, everybody's getting sued by the state. So you're right in there with everybody else, with your MID and CCID and all these guys. So that's a long-term thing that's starting to be addressed. The report that was prepared by GSA went to the state in twenty twenty, I think. And and this this huge thing looks like a Los Angeles phone book. So it's kind of a long term, and you have until twenty forty to meet that, that sort of thing.
In regards to
Now, John's question on what do I tell developers that come in, which that's a, that's a hell of a good question that's gonna involve looking at what you have left from what you are now. You do have a little, little bit left. But the thing is, if the five hundred and sixty units build and they are entitled now, so theoretically, they can build tomorrow if they had buyers, then you would not be able to do anything else. So that's, that's the, now, if you strategize it and, well, it's not gonna be built for five years, that sort of thing, then you can
Buy time.
Buy time, yeah. And that's, and that's gonna be a, the city strategy, policy, whatever you wanna call it, to realistically say, well, I know we have five hundred, five hundred and sixty units entitled, but what's the market gonna absorb? A hundred a year? I don't know. If you, whatever it is, I don't know. And then go from from there and then strategize that way because I know planning, that's what they do. They talk with everybody about water. And when, and then they go turn to engineer, you have water? Well, yes and no.
But the CIGMA thing, just going back real quick, you said we're partners with MID and, but what's the city's role in in this? Who's the representative who's, you know, advocating in regards to the city specifically?
I'm I'm not sure on Livingston. Let me look into that because I have so many GSAs I deal with. I wanna make sure. I I know it's with MID.
I guess we forward that information because I mean
Do you know if it was Chavaria was the 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 GSA guy? I'm not quite, I'll find out.
Let us know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know it's, you know, the li- the line are anticipated of twenty forty, but it's important that we are included conversations or discussions and
Yeah, I know early on, and this is when, gosh, I don't know, five years ago or so, it was, all this stuff was starting. I actually, I did attend a couple of meetings at MID, at MID. But then the city took, internally took over and I'm not quite sure.
In regards to like addressing it basin-wide, as you mentioned, so it'll be a a regional effort then to address that?
You address, you're you're in the Turlocks Basin?
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a big old thing that we have to address.
But we also do need to make our own efforts as a city, right?
You you have to because, and this is assuming your GSA along with the, within the MID folks. And you you, MID most likely came to you already and say, hey, Livingston has these options. You can pump a gallon and recharge a gallon. You can buy a gallon from us, whatever. And and they will do, you know, there's folks buying surface water at four hundred dollars an acre foot. So it can be anything from costing nothing to costing a bunch.
And then just to go back to your second question, the future, long long-term planning.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, we have some well projects going on, but, I mean, the work's gonna have to continue. The planning has to continue. I mean, just with these two department developers, that's that's major, but not anticipating any other development or any other business coming in.
I I think what we can do is refine the cap- the available capacity now. And we did do one in October, but and then we projected capacity with those five hundred and sixty units. Those, there's, there's a lot of parameters that go into that. There's some conservative assumptions that certain things that we can refine and then present to the council with options. You wanna go this way, wanna go that way? And then they'll give you, maybe you have a hundred units available. Maybe you have fifty, maybe you have two hundred. Before, and what's gonna drive this, what's gonna put a ceiling on this, it's gonna be that peak hour deal.
I I think the important thing that Mario was presenting to you is the council. And what the story you guys need to hear is that if all of these projects are finished and some of the timing is uncertain, that you have the capacity to serve really your existing residents and maybe these extra, extra units and maybe a few more. But that does not include all of your city limits. That's another thing. Not everything in your city limits. If everything was to develop according to the general plan standards, zoning standards and the city limits, you wouldn't necessarily have the capacity today. So there would have to be these projects that Mario's talked about, plus other future water projects, whether it's, you know, putting in some kind of a surface water treatment plant, you know, pulling water out of the Set River, more reliance on MID irrigation water as a conjunctive use, I guess, in your parks and other types of
That's minor, the MID thing.
Sounds like it, sounds like it's minor, but in the big picture, it helps. Because you're driving, you're pulling that water, you're pulling that demand out of your domestic demand, which is what you're trying to do. We're talking domestic water use here. And it's fairly significant.
What's gonna make a big difference? And and again, this is mid to long term, is the surface, the hybrid system, taking water out of the river. Yeah, treat it, but you you, last one I estimated was about a hundred million dollar. And that's the big takeout. And that's off, it's on the west side. They all cost about the same thing. And and it's, you you have a takeout and then you have, you have works facilities, you have a big treatment plant thing, and then you have to send it to distribution. So it's a chunk of change. And then there's the O and M factor in there, operations and maintenance. It's one of those, you have this big old thing that you have to operate and maintain. Well, if you do, there there are some there like that. And you have like one big intake out of the DMC or something. And then you service three communities with one treatment plant and just distribute that. But it's, yeah, you this sounds really cheap compared to when you get to the surface water.
So with this in place and understanding that this is just to kind of keep up and maintain or replace or fix the current problems that we have, but thinking about the future, is there, is an option of at least building one or two more wells? And is is that another option?
It is another option.
You know, just to kind of plan ahead and say, hey, you know, if if we could.
And we actually talked about, talked about the the one on, at Arkalian. There's a well ten over here that's abandoned. And it's a perfect site to build another well. So that would be well twenty, I guess, is the next one.
So maybe should we start at least kind of adding those, a project or those two projects to this to kind of start?
We can. We actually brought that, that's why we left it. We brought that up a few years back. And there's so many things going on. So let's back off a little bit and then we'll deal with it as we go along. So now may be a good time to start thinking of. And there's other areas where you probably could use wells because wells, it's normally nice to have them sprinkled around the the service area, not just all lumped up in one.
So as if it was today, based on your information that you have, based on the numbers, if we if we were to add right now today, two more wells to this summary, a rough estimate, are are we talking about two point five each with everything else?
With with, you're talking about the cost of two point five million?
Or just adding or or doing another one?
It depends where they would go. Like if you put the one, the one here that say replace where ten with well twenty. It's right there. So the transmission of raw water would be real cheap because it's right, there's, the well is the well. It costs a million and change. And and then you have to expand the the plant to a, so you'd probably have another two vessels there, two tanks. So it'd probably be, yeah, a couple, by that time, probably be three million bucks or something like that.
Is there anything we can do to, I mean, I mean, yeah, we've got a lot of
To speed this up?
Well, no. Well, we got a lot of things going on, but is, you know, considering that both, two of them were grant dependent. I mean, is there anything that we can do as far as planning and say at least kind of like the, lay the groundwork and?
Yeah, the the plans, the plans are actually pretty much done for these. So hurry up and wait mode with the state. Plans are about ninety percent.
Unless somebody came up and say, hey, here's five million dollars, right?
Yeah, if you if you find, yeah, under the some precautions, yeah.
But I would like to see like in the near future, some kind of options for addressing some of this stuff.
That's really good.
A roadmap.
We can expand it too. And it'll dovetail too with what planning ends up And it'll dovetail too with what planning ends up needing to know. Because what, what do they tell people that?
Yes, sir.
Say, say again, say.
Just, just some feedback. If those 580 units were to come in tomorrow and say, if I had a chance just on a developer standpoint, you'd probably rack in about a million and a half in fees, just the water connection fees.
Just some feedback. So let's say as a developer on those 580 units, if they were to come in tomorrow, you'd probably raise, you know, pretty close to a million and a half in fees, just for water connection fees.
Right.
I, I don't know where you guys allocate that, but.
You, you guess, it'd be substantial fees, yeah.
But yeah, I mean, probably sooner than later, some kind of roadmap or options and.
Yeah, would, would these?
No, go, go ahead.
So, so with that in mind, my feedback would be since you already have, you guys already committed to those 580 units and he, if he already has 90% of that work for that well, maybe that'd be something you guys want to look into since if those units do come or do get built, you guys would more than likely have a good amount of that money, if not all of it, for that well.
Any other comments by planning department?
Just a couple of comments. Again, Miguel Galvez, just let you know in the, the developer of the villages, those 580 units actually came in today to find out what the cost would be for the impact fees to develop out there. When we're looking at, you know, projecting revenues and things like that, he's anticipating starting construction, not this fiscal year, but fiscal year 23, 24. So that's when he expects construction to, to commence. But I mean, that, he's coming down, that'll be coming down the, the pipeline. I did want to ask Mario and really for the members of the audience, do we still have to deal with nitrates and arsenic treatment and?
You may have to. Yeah, you don't know until you actually get the, the well and, and the production well. That's why we do these test wells, because we look, around here you have, yeah, maybe nitrate's not too bad, but you do have arsenic. You have manganese. You have of course, TCP, obviously. So those, those are the nastiest ones. And some iron you do not, not, I think 16 is iron, right?
And are you aware of any tightening of the standards by the state or any new tightening of the standards, the limits?
Oh, they won't get any looser. I know that, or I guess that. I don't know of any tightening. I mean, the last, last ones that, uh, uh, came down was the, the TCP MCL. It cannot get any tighter because that's, if you detected, you're out of compliance. So that, that was the, the one before that was chromium. That kind of messed up a lot of these folks, like Los Bando's got hit really bad because of chromium. You do not have that problem here luckily. So your, your, your big thing is TCP in Livingston. And then the other ones are like arsenic and iron, manganese, those are kind of like run-of-the-mill treatment. They're still very expensive. They're, they're, they've been around for many, many years, many decades.
The last commoner question I have is how feasible is it to have a, a dual system? Because, you know, if you're watering your lawn, you're pretty much using drinking water quality to water your lawn. And if you have something that's such as say raw water, you might require a purple pipe system. Is that something we should begin looking at for your development?
Yeah, we did a little, uh, uh, technical memo on that late last year and provided it to the city on that. Yeah, the, the purple, I mean, they work really well. They're very expensive to first construct because it's basically another water system.
I think we had discussions regarding like for landscaping or.
The one, the one, the one thing city looked at was well 15. Well, 15 is not a really good well. It's really small for one thing. I think it pumps like 700 gallons or something, which is pretty low.
By.
And the water quality is right at the edge of being non-podable. I think arsenic is at like nine or something, and MCL is 10. So it's right at the verge. Yeah, that, that little one over there, yeah. And so that's well 15. The city actually approached Caltrans in the past to possibly use that well for irrigating along.
The landscaping of the freeway, yeah.
And it was, they were, it's kind of, they were non-responsive. They didn't say yes, no, they didn't say nothing.
Yeah, because right now we'd be three of their two-inch meters, so that would be six inches.
Oh, the mic.
Mic check, mic.
Yeah, right now, Caltrans uses two-inch meters and in three different places. So they are irrigating with all domestic water. So that's one of the reasons they were, you know, asked if they would like to use that well. But right now, like I see, see that they have no comment. But that would be a really good help for us too.
And that would be a start.
We, I think I briefly mentioned, I know I talked about so many wells and all that. But we actually on this, when we did the future capacity for the, for the city, we took 15 out. You don't want to be messing with that. 15 is too far from everything to have a raw water line to another one of these central, centralized plants for just a little bit of water. You're going to spend a ton of, it's not worth it.
So as a city, should we start, I mean, then considering that we're approaching the summer and then the drought and all that, should we? If, even though I believe the city of Livingston is still under a conservation. Measures, but not really enforced or not really, or I don't know. I mean, but I know that in the past, we gun a little bit more aggressive. Maybe more education, more education, especially in the summer months. Maybe it, it wouldn't hurt to kind of go back into a more, not strict, but a more recommended. Conservation effort, because I mean, I think we could probably do better.
Yeah. If you look at the low one there, 2017, mandatory conservation right there.
And the city and the council had approved last year to keep our restrictions on, so they still are active.
Yeah, so we will be, we already have a lot of our flyers. We'll probably be sending those out again.
Usually goes out of mail, right?
Yes, there'll be a, a all-citywide mailer. Then we'll also start putting out some of the signs that we've had. We'll start using those up in different places. So that should help as well.
Yeah, oh, definitely. Any other questions by planning?
I was going to make one comment and it's really for the purpose of educational purposes, I think. And that is, you know, of all these additional costs will be affecting the city. Is that something that, you know, will affect the ratepayers? To what degree will that be impacting them? And I think the more education we explain the reason why these costs are, I think it'll be easier for, for the ratepayers to, you know, be willing to pay that.
Absolutely makes sense. Any questions by public works? Tony, any other questions?
Miguel?
No, it's public work. You have anything?
No, I didn't hear what he said. That was right.
Oh.
My question was, you know, are these additional costs, are all these costs going to be absorbed by the ratepayers? Will they be looking at a, a cost in, in the utility bills? And my comment was the more education we get out there, the more justification is out there and they can understand why this is happening.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it will happen because.
In the past, in the past years during the drought, we've handed out not only the mailers, but then our staff will also hand these out and, and start talking to the residents and let them know, you know, we are on restrictions. Here's what's going on. Well, we could start doing our, uh, notification and, and we, we can even start our citations again if we have to, if it comes to that point. But yeah, this, this will definitely help by sending out the flyers and then as staff goes out and starts getting hot and people are wasting water, we do, we do try to educate them and talk to them.
Any other questions or comments? Tony, any questions? You have any questions?
No.
Any other comments, questions, council?
Good.
Council, thank you.
Vanessa?
Well, I think this is, this is great and especially starting the conversation and leading it to conservation. I think this will be a, a good opportunity to further continue that conversation in regards to what else we can do as a city. How can we, what other efforts can we implement? Not only to educate, but also to encourage people. Because I actually, by, um, by luck, well, or not so long ago, another, a, a resident sent me pictures of water running down the drain from half a block up the street and, you know. But I think it also will take residents to try and educate and, and start the conversation also. So maybe if we can bring this eventually back to the council and kind of see what else we can do or if there's anything else we can do to help in with those efforts to conserve more water before we really get into the summer.
Any, any other public comment? We're good? Yeah? Okay.
Yeah, and just want to emphasize as a developer, it's, it's great. You guys, you guys had this meeting, but like I said, talking to your, your, your team or your experience, like, like Mario said, just from what he said, I think that, that's probably your lowest hanging fruit. That one well that he says 90% of the work is done. And don't think like you guys are going to commit to it today, because these projects take two, three, four, five years down the road. These other apartments that are, like he said, that might start 23, 24, you're probably 25, 26 before you're done. So the, in my opinion, and what I've been telling you guys at every meeting, as a developer in, in the state and the nation, the reason we have a housing crisis is, it's, it's easy, supply and demand. We have more demand than we have supply and this, this stuff takes time. I mean, we can't just build housing, you know, overnight, you know, it takes years. So if you guys get ahead with the infrastructure, I think that'll put you guys ahead of the rest of the, the cities. And, and you guys will be benefiting the community. If you guys want lower house of cost, lower rents, provide more supply. It's that simple.
Absolutely. Any other public comment on the, on the phone? I don't hear any, but no, definitely appreciate the, the workshop. And I know that, you know, this is a big, a big priority for the council and for myself in regards to our water, infrastructure, quality, quality, capacity. So I appreciate everybody, you know, being here today, tonight. There's a lot of hard questions, a lot of questions I need to, you know, seek answers or options and look forward to hearing that sooner than later, a roadmap of, of what we, we have as an options. And so I look forward to continue working. This conversation needs to continue ongoing and on a more regular basis to be able to address some of these concerns, challenges moving forward. And I think that's it. So we'll adjourn our workshop at 7:25. Thank you.